Are you ready? Correct. Follow me. Dune City Council Regular Session. Your order of Wednesday, April 20th, 2022 at 6:00 p.m.
Will call?
Will call, please.
Mayor Sheldon Meyer?
Present.
Council President Susan Snow?
Here.
Counselor Duke Wells?
Here.
Counselor Rory Hammond?
Here.
Counselor Robert Ors?
Here.
Counselor Tom Mallon?
Here.
Everybody's here.
All right. I just want to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, with all intention, under God, in the name of the Lord, with liberty and justice for all. I need a motion to approve the agenda. And you've got a new agenda?
Yes. You get the new one?
So, Luke?
Second.
Any discussion? Hold up a favor.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hold up a favor of approving the consent agenda indicated by Senator Knight. Consent agenda is approved unanimously. Announcements and court's funds.
Of course, with regard to the consent agenda, you do not have your account reconciliations because... Because the auditor sent me a whole lot of journal entries to enter, and I entered them all in. And as soon as I entered them all in, now I'm $4,000 off the account. So I'm waiting for the auditor to look at it and tell me what it is that happened to be that far off. It was $4,000 worth of journal entries, so my guess is there's something there.
That'd be a big error on the record.
So, anyway, that's why it's not there. Announcements. The Dune City Budget Committee is meeting every Tuesday evening at 5:00 p.m. The public is welcome to attend the meetings in person or may virtually attend by using the GoToMeeting platform. Information will be posted on the city's website prior to each meeting. Individuals should receive their water from Loahink Lake by relying on the city's water right permit. The Dune City Shared Domestic Water Supply Program must have their meters replaced with radio read meters and approved fish screens installed with information regarding pumps, gallons per minute, horsepower, and pipe size to Dune City before October 1st of this year. Contact City Hall for more information. I will point out that this item that we have brought forward tonight, that is an approved Fish and Wildlife fish screen. The city is now manufacturing those. We currently have about 13 in stock. More will be produced later. They are... You'll be at... Your name will be added on a first pump, first served basis to acquire those fish screens. You do need to make arrangements for your own plumber or your own diver to install them. And when you do that, please ask that diver to get the information for the form, as in type of pump you have, the make and model, manufacturer, horsepower, gallons per minute, and the size of pipe, so that we can get all that information sent in to the state by October 1st. Any questions? Call City Hall.
I thought we had a diver.
What?
I thought we had a diver.
We do have divers. One of them cut his thumb off. Not all the way, but enough that he can't go in the water now. The other one I haven't heard from in a while. I do know that Brian Mill, our first diver, is out there doing private diving on behalf of people to install the pumps. I don't know if a plumber has to install it or not. I believe that the plumber should. So I really encourage that they get a plumber to do it, but I guarantee you the plumber's going to be more expensive. So I'll leave it to everybody to do it. The main thing is get the information to City Hall.
Okay. Well, okay. So the diver would obviously get the serial number of the pump when he installed that, right?
Right. And he doesn't really have to dive on the pump to install it, as long as the pump is already on a stand and level. If he looks... Sometimes I'll go down to check on it. If your pump is not on a stand, then yes, he would have to dive, because when he puts it back, he'll have to put... Set it back up on the stand, so it's not down in the mud.
He'd pull it up, stand it all above the waterline and slop it in the water?
If it's connected to the stand, he could. He could pull it up into the boat, make the replacement, take the photo, gather the information, and put it back down without diving at all.
I'm imagining one not being on a stand. It feels all of a sudden.
A lot of the stands have been eroded and are gone.
It seems like it would be hard for him to hit the stand and put it back down.
Unless it's really weighted on the bottom.
Yeah. They're supposed to be tied to the stand. They're wired down. The inlet... What is the outlet for again, Jamie? That's gonna... I'm not understanding the two firm codes. You got one upstream, one downstream. And you and I kind of talked about this before.
I... It gets cramped, clamped down tight.
So what I'm assuming it is, is that those are submersible pumps, and they have a top part and a bottom part, and I think that pump...
It fits right.
Right in between. It's the whole pump.
And gets... This gets cinched down. But what it does is it takes... If you look at your pump, it's got this little tiny screen on it, like a little strip of screen around it. And what it does is it takes that screen and spreads it out over all of this distance. So now, small fish can't get sucked up, it's fried, and things can't get sucked up to it. But also, it's designed so that you don't get the debris stuck on it. And so it stays cleaner longer and runs better for a longer period of time. But you do want to have it up on a stand, and, you know, whether your stand is standing straight up or down, that's up to you.
I have a clue. You suck on a filter.
Well, it's not going to fit every pump?
Yeah. I don't know, because is that like a six-inch... It's like those that usually goes six as well, and it's going to go through there.
It goes six to four, and then it can be cinched down to that far. So...
Okay. But again, if you've got water coming in through 15 holes in that PVC, why is there a front goal on the upstream side?
Well, there is no upstream side, because you're in a lake.
Your pump... Well, yeah, there is, because it's going to be pumping through one of those holes up into the pump. I'm asking, why is there a front goal or an opening at both ends?
To attach it to your pipe that goes into your house or up to your house.
One, it's a...
It's a filter to... No, he's trying to figure out...
I have a picture on my desk, Tom, so if you want to come see one installed.
I think I've seen it.
I think it's attached to both ends of the pump, not on the pipe.
That's what I think, too.
Most pumps are like a six-inch diameter or a four-inch diameter, and that's just attached to the bottom of the front. The question that you might have is that if the intake valve, the pump is too far down, it might be clamped over and won't get in there.
Okay. Well, then the pump is going to have to be, what, 24 inches long or 30 plus width to look for the tip match to clamp it?
I think that's a pretty standard size, so I don't know. I mean, I'm a bit...
We haven't had anybody complain yet with the...
I'm not a designer.
No, I know. You're concerned. I get that. I leave it to the experts. They're the ones that designed it, so that's what we're going with.
Okay. Who designed it again?
This was designed by the engineers at Fish and Wildlife Service in the DOWS.
Jamie, can you just clarify? Is this is for...
Dune City Water Right holders only, and anybody who has a state water right that was dated after 1992.
Okay. Well, that's going to be... That's... Those are submersible pumps, so that's pumps that... Submersible pumps, they throw in the water. I don't know what they're going to do for ground pumps, because that'd be most ground pump... You know, the shallow well pumps are on the...
Well, they should be real.
Well, no. But they use them for both. You can stick them in a six-inch pipe, or you can throw them in the lake.
How much are these?
The city is charging exactly what it costs us, which is about $150. It may go up with our next order of pipe. I don't know.
Do you need another word? The only question I have is why are they requiring the serial number of the pump?
I don't know.
Because, you know...
I guess so that they can look it up and make sure that, you know, to check stuff. I honestly...
So the question happens, so the pump fails, do we have to... When you replace it?
Yeah, to replace it. Record it. Yeah. I don't know. I don't know. We haven't discussed that. I want to remind Dune City residents that accessory dwellings are not allowed in Dune City due to septic considerations and water quality concerns. Some have been approved through the conditional use process, but very few. This includes RVs. The city does not allow people to live in an RV on the property of another without approval of the planning commission. And we also have another reminder to residents of Dune City that Clear Lake Road, Pacific Avenue, Lake Boulevard, Darlings Loop, and Canary Road are all Lane County roads for which Dune City has no control. So if you have issues that you want to discuss with somebody about those roads and the way they're maintained, you contact Lane County. And Dune City is seeking volunteers to help maintain its roadways, as our former volunteer is no longer available. If you're interested in helping out, please contact Dune City for further information. Thank you.
Do we have any citizen input on items not discussed in public hearing?
No, there's not. No, there's not.
Presentation and speakers. Business license software presentation.
That will be Preston Martin and our own Melissa House.
Hi, guys. I'm Melissa. This is Preston. Last month, we presented some paperwork and information to you about putting our business licenses online, so that applicants can just fill it out online, K there, and instantly get a certificate. You guys wanted more information, so I made you a PowerPoint slideshow. And I... Preston, come down to answer any of your questions.
We can pull that out further from the wall, so that the councilors can see it a little better. Feel free to get... Sometimes you have to manhandle it a little bit. Okay.
A little better?
That better, guys? Would full-size be better?
Full-size, great.
Better.
Melissa?
Yeah. Can that slide away from the wall, so that...
Yeah, it does come away from the wall a little bit. I think that's it.
That's it.
I thought I mentioned you'd be standing there holding it.
Or pick it up on you, or...
Okay. So Net Assets is a company that does online processes for applications for cities and businesses like us. I am not familiar with this house.
Would it be better if you were in this chair over here?
Then how do I click?
Oh, that's... Oh, you can't carry it up with you.
No?
No, I can click.
I don't know.
Sure?
How to work when I can just... All right. See, I'll try to make this click. So this is going to be... It's an application online. We're going to put a link on our website, and it'll be in real time, so everything is pretty instant and fast. And it's customizable application, so they're going to take our current business license application and the information that we have on there, and they're going to format something that works for people online. And it's easy to use. It's quick turnaround times, and there's communications built into the system for messaging, so that we can communicate with business owners, they can communicate with us, and then even in the back, we can communicate with each other, too, which helps. There's no startup costs or maintenance fees, no customization fees or long-term commitments, and they support you every step of the way. So if we have any questions or any problems, they're always going to be there for us. And features and benefits? It's easy to manage all in one browser, so Dune City will add a link to license register on our website, which a little side note, the website is kind of a mess, and we are working to get that cleaned up, so that forms and links like this are a lot easier to find. And we're going to have that link in multiple locations, because I know some people will just go to the homepage, and some people will look deeper, so it'll be in different spots. And you can access it by your email, phone. There's several different ways you can even call us, and we can help do it. If business owners don't have access to a computer, that's okay, because they can call, we can help fill out the application form, do it over the phone. We are also considering getting an iPad or laptop to put in here, which would be really nice for people to come in, and it would be used for so many other things, too. And you can kind of lock it down, so that people can't just come in and do whatever they want on it. So, right now, we spend a lot of time putting together business licenses, not only with the application, but with sending postcards and reminders, like sometimes one letter, two-letter reminders. And then we have to make the business cards all on cardstock paper, cut them out, laminate them. We keep track of it. There's two different logs we keep track of, plus the mail log. It's a lot of work, a lot of time goes into it. Not hard, but it's time-consuming, and this really, really would cut all of that out. So business owners just go online, fill it out, pay for it. Like, it's fast. And...
And they can print out the card, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. And you can also, not only to print out the card, but we're going to put a little note in there that suggests you take a screenshot of it. That way, you're not carrying around a piece of paper. You have it with you on your phone. And it's quick and easy for review and approval processes for both the user and us. Applications are easy to fill out and submit online. There's no more searching our website for the application. A lot of people call and say, "I can't find that form. I can't find that application." This will be a lot easier to find. And there'll be an automated renewal date, so you don't have to remember when to renew. We don't have to worry about sending you postcards or letters. It'll just be automatic, sent to your email. It's a secure online payment process, and there'll be a payment gateway for applicants to easily and securely enter their yearly license fee at the end of the application or renewal process. If the applicant does not want to enter payment info... A lot of people don't want to put in their information over the computer or the internet. Dune City can accommodate payments by check or cash, or we can provide the applicant with a private code. And there's built-in messaging systems, which we kind of overlook a little bit on it. Fully customizable with our current license and registration process. So if we need... If we want to have a report that we need to filter out to see who's coming up for renewal, or who's expired, or whatever information you might need, it's easy to find those reports. And they can build us more reports if we need more information. Right? Yeah. So how it works is business license applicants will fill out an online submission and pay the appropriate fee through secure online payment processing. Staff members will be notified of the application submission. Review and approval will be completed online, with notifications of decision being automatically sent to the applicant. And then if we need to communicate with them, there's the built-in messaging system. Once approved, business license certificates are hosted by license register and available for download. Staff can manage license details, status in real time. The web application manages the renewal process. Notifications are automatically sent to the business owner as the renewal date approaches. It's easy and convenient. You can use phone, iPad, laptop. And it eliminates the need to print out the paper copy, like we discussed. It's web-based. There's no software to install. It's secure and reliable, cloud-based service. It's a usage-based cost, which we'll get to that in just a second. There's no long-term commitments. There's no hidden fees, and the product and user support is included. So current things to consider right now with our cost of doing business license is, right now, we have 99 businesses and applications to process every year. And just an example, postage stamps alone for the year for everything that we do cost $230, just for postage, just the stamps. That's not including everything else that goes in, and all the supplies. And like... So staff members' time daily, monthly, and yearly spent handling business license the way we do it now, hourly wages for staff members. We've got to think about the printer ink and toner, cardstock paper, printer paper, and envelopes, lamination machine, and business card size lamination, the time spent for updating logs and renewing and filtering through logs to see who's up for renewal, which is kind of an old-fashioned way of doing things. It's dangerous, anyway, because you would be surprised how many times things get deleted accidentally or missorted and then saved, and it's a mess. Trust me, it wasn't. Okay. Can I add that the fees for those? It's really reasonable. It's $12 per business licensing. That goes to net assets. That's it. No hidden fees, guaranteed agreement with a signed contract. And Dune City staff would spend less than half the amount of time doing business license with an online process like this. There is a payment gateway that they offer, and it would be a 5% fee for the total transaction, but we can use our own payment gateway, too. So it's not mandatory that we use theirs. That is up for discussion. And I think that pretty much covers it.
No. We did cover it.
Any questions?
What is your own payment gateway cost?
What's that?
Is there any cost to use your own payment gateway?
The cost is current... Not through net assets. They won't charge us for using our own gateway. So whatever it is that you're paying now is for your gateway.
This came up in the budget meeting last night. Was it... We paid $4,000, but didn't you say it was 12% they charge us?
Yeah. Yeah, 12%.
Yeah, so...
Up to a certain amount.
Right.
And then after that, it's free.
The only question I have is about the 5% fee. That's based on the total amount of the money that they're collecting through the payment process?
Correct.
That's the only thing I had.
And I am researching different payment gateways for Dune City, to see if we can get one that's cheaper and can be integrated with all these other things that we're trying to do.
So currently, this is just for business licenses, but it can be adapted for other licenses and things, same sort of setup?
It is designed for business licensing. What other licenses are you thinking of?
Well, we part... We have permit fees and things like that for other things.
Yeah. Permitting, not so much. It's... If it is types of business licensing, some municipalities have multiple business license types. We can do that, but not really permitting software.
What sort of... How do we enter reports? You just log on and have them printed out, or...
I have access to like what a back office would be, like kind of like on a website. We have access to the back, and then we can do all kinds of things back there.
My question is, if we're prepared, should something happen, and we discontinue service with you with all of our permits, what licenses on the cloud, what happens to them?
We still can get that information and access it. It's all cloud-based.
Well...
We could print it out, too. I mean, we will be printing out to keep, because we have to keep a hard copy on file, anyway. So we'll have access to all of that information.
So we wouldn't lose that?
No.
We don't hold data hostage, right? That is yours. If somebody partners with us and decides they're not getting value out of the service, and they want to part ways, that's okay, and like I said, we don't hold that hostage.
What's the database you're using for the stored data?
I'm sorry?
What database? Informix? What database are you using? Is it SBL base, or what?
I would have to go back and talk to our technical folks on the database, but I can get that for you.
Just curious. It's not important.
To me, it's pretty plain that just in the time that our staff won't be doing that with more than pay for it, let alone, you know, $12 is cheaper than our staff and themselves. To me, it's kind of a... I think it's a good idea to have our staff sign up with this, so...
How many business licenses do we process a year?
Right now, as of... Last week, I think I counted, it was 99. We're at 99.
So we would increase the license fees by $12, and then be pay a 5% premium when they pay for it through them.
That would be up to you guys, if you wanted to increase our cost for business licenses.
That is a very common approach that we see with the services.
And what's the average cost of our business licenses now?
They're $85.
$35?
$85.
$85, okay.
A year.
Jamie, do you and your staff have a recommendation on this?
Our staff recommendation was offered a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
And that was to... I didn't at that time. I know more now. I did, but yes.
Okay.
The recommendation is...
Your...
Yeah.
Do you need a motion for most to approve, or...
Yes. To go with it or not, to accept it or not. It will come back to you in probably some kind of agreement or contract or something.
What's the next step if we approve it tonight?
If you approve it, I send you a service agreement. You can review the terms, make sure they're acceptable, and then you sign it, and we build a system.
I make a motion for staff to move forward with the license register and a business agreement.
We'll second it.
Discussion?
Discussion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Another question. So people are paying... I don't think I understood this. What are they using? A credit card?
Credit card or check.
And if they use a credit card, then there's a fee, so we're also paying that fee on top of the other fees. Is that right?
We pay... We pay a fee now when they pay through...
Through the credit card machine.
Through a credit card. But we won't be paying that fee to them. We'll be paying... They'll be taking that fee, and we'll have to be paying them 5%. So $85 license plus $12 times 105% is going to be... The business license will be about $102 bucks.
Can you run those numbers for me again?
Well, I got 101.85. So we... Our business license is $85 a year.
Yeah.
And the fee to do this is $12, so that's $97, and if you multiply that by 1.05, which that's the 5%, that figures out to be at $102 for a business license. If you bought the fee, we pay, and we charge them the cost of doing that, or we can absorb that, and they pay the credit card fee, or we might absorb it.
So you're adding the 12 to the 85?
Right. I'm just...
Because my thing, from the way I read it, the 5% was on the total transaction, and the total transaction is $85.
Yeah. But I just did it because I could add 92 and multiply 105.
I'm just saying, because it came out a little different as I think.
So did you come up with $100 bucks?
So it's...
$101?
For the transaction, it's $425.
That's why I didn't do the math on the PowerPoint.
Yeah. But that puts us right about $100 bucks. That's what I... Yeah, but that puts us right about $100 bucks, that's what I was, that was just...
And we have not yet made a decision about whether the business license would absorb it for the, whether we would absorb it or the license would, is that right?
Right, we have not. That would be another thing that would come back.
That's part of the discussion.
Probably about the time, yeah, and it's part of the discussion now, yeah.
Okay.
But if you went with it and decided to, then all that would come back to you. When the agreement comes in, I would try to have whatever ordinance or resolution we needed to, to make sure that the costs were covered.
I only put the money in there to tell us what the total cost was.
If you want it then covered.
I wasn't saying we should do it or not do it. I was just saying that's the total cost of the transaction.
So we don't have to include that in our motion?
No.
Not in it?
Until, we're going to have to accept the service contract, and I think then we can decide how we want to do it, right?
Was accepting the service contract included in the motion?
No.
Not in there?
No, no.
You just said move forward.
Agreed, agreed. We're going to do it, but we got to make sure...
The law will get it.
Yeah.
Depending on the terms of the contract.
Any other questions?
Is, and there's no initiation fee?
No, no upfront cost, nothing's hit in, it's all $12, and then you offer the 5% for the gateway, that's it.
Okay. You'll leave us all out in the woods and make sure we come back, and then it's okay?
Nothing like that.
Is this license register service agreement a part of...
Which one?
It's in your packet?
It's in the packet.
No, that one's an IGA.
No, I put the...
Oh, you put it in there? Okay. She put that part together, I don't know what's in it.
Agreement's in there.
Oh, so we still want the, with another agreement or...
Well, the agreement for consideration, this is just a presentation tonight.
It would be the same one actually, that he would come back to us with and to sign.
Right, but it would still, because it's not agenda ice, would have to come back as a, for something to consider.
Okay, I just didn't want to...
Separate.
So we have a motion and a second, and questions, all in favor? Any votes? Pass or no vote? Thank you, good presentation.
Thank you so much.
And this is as good a time as any to make the announcement. Melissa submitted her letter of resignation today, so I will be looking for another part-time administrative assistant. She'll be here until March, oh, excuse me, May 4th.
Hold on, we're not for yet.
Of course, she didn't tell me what year, no, maybe she...
Nice tragedy.
You're getting close to the point that I used to describe my resume as, it either looked like I had a wealth of experience or I couldn't hold a job. Be careful with that.
Have a good day, guys.
Thank you, Melissa. Well, we'll see you next week.
Yeah, I'll see you.
And our two whole business. Where is number 264?
As a staff...
The vacating roadways, the little road path, to replant roads as private and install a date. Firstly, the proposed ordinance requires two readings before it is enacted. City Charter, Section 34, Proposition 3, provides that both readings may be read by title only if no council member present at the meeting requests it to be read in full or, copy of the ordinance is provided for each member, and all requirements for posting and advertisement have been met. City recorder have all requirements for posting advertisements met?
Yes.
Does any councillor desire the ordinance to be read in full? If not, entertain a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
All in favor? I will read ordinance 263 by title only. Ordinance vacating a portion of Little Road, picture I established as a public right-of-way by Little Road, heights subdivision, date September 30, 2020. Could I have the staff report?
You should have the staff report in your packets, maybe not in the packets, but given to you separately.
Yes, okay.
And do you want me to go ahead and just read it into the record? Whatever you want.
So not just entered into the record, do we need to have it?
Yes, entered into the record, so no, it does not need to be on the recording necessarily. The bottom line is, this is the only subdivision that you have considered since I have been an employee at City Hall, so you should remember this one. I'm hoping you remember this one. And they would like very much to now put a gate at the end of it and make it a gated community with privacy, and there are concerns for that, but since the plat had already been approved and recorded, they are now required to get a vacation from the city and refile the plat, get, go back and get the plat re-approved and do a new map to show that it is a private road rather than a public road. And that is all they were doing, is just trying to change the road to something different. And I got word from our engineer today who went out and did the inspection on the roads that have been installed. He said they're the best roads in Dune City. They're absolutely beautiful.
So we want to keep them up?
Yeah.
Who owns the roads now?
We do.
Yeah.
Which means we also have to maintain them in the future.
Did we pay for the asphalt?
No. No, we require the subdividers to do that, the developers to do that.
They did that, but we own the roads.
Well, and what they're asking for is that they own the road.
I understand.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to find out.
Right, we become the one who has to take care of them. They get dedicated to the city for public use. They become a public roadway, and they really would prefer that it be a private roadway. And they will assume in their HOA to do maintenance, like every other HOA that has private roadways.
So the developer, whomever other than us, has paid for the land, they've paid for the asphalt, for the...
Yeah, they're paying for everything.
Engineering, everything on that, yeah.
I would mention that Lynn Blackstone, thank you, drawing a line. Lynn Blackstone is here, he's the agent for the developer and kind of watching over the whole thing, and also the local representative when it comes time to sell the lots and that sort of thing is also within the seating. So if you have any questions, they will answer any questions you might have.
Are we having a public hearing for this?
Yes.
This is...
Right, this is just staff report. And I'm done.
Do any of the councils have any questions to share?
Yes, one of them does. If, okay, I understand in the sense that, I mean, there is value to us in the fact that we don't have to maintain those roads every now and then, right? Is there also any reason that we would want to sell this land as opposed to giving it to the developer?
Actually, you already, that's already been voted on.
Okay.
And if you will look at your map and the staff report, you see the first little U shape from the beginning and around the corner, and back up?
Yeah.
Not including the cul-de-sac.
Should we be discussing this now or should we be discussing after the public hearing when we deliver it?
This is now, it's time for the staff report. And so what I'm, I was telling you is, that part right there was in ownership of Dune City in fee simple, by deed, and you, months ago, already voted to convey that over to the owner of that property, and so it's already been done.
I...
So now, he owns the land for all the land upon which the road sits.
Okay. I'm a little confused, but I was going to ask questions after the public hearing, but when was this road completed? Because I drove, I mean, I drove these roads last year.
I think it was Monday.
They were completed or no? Because part of the end of that, wasn't it, I thought it was a dirt road and it wasn't yet approved?
It was, Wells, Ray Wells Incorporated has been putting the new roads in.
Just right now, okay.
Yeah, our engineer went out, either, it was either last Thursday or Monday.
So the developer, you see, these are the questions, so the developer bought this
land, planted it, and gave it to the city for us to provide utilities, but there's no utilities and things like that on there now, and how are they going to do this?
Are the utilities in? Yeah, the utilities are in.
Yeah, okay.
Fire and police will remain as usual if we...
Yeah, just like Dune City.
Yeah.
So none of these lots are developed yet?
No.
Okay, so I wasn't crazy when I drove down there last year.
No, no, you weren't crazy.
Because... Well, I might have been crazy for something else, but it wasn't that. So as I read, this matter will be heard in a public hearing following completion of all old business items on the agenda.
Correct.
Any other questions for staff?
Are the residents going to be impacted, either positive or negative?
The residents were notified of a meeting this evening, and I'm not sure that any of them are here.
I've been through this once before personally, and it was a huge war between the residents. Half wanted to pay, half didn't. New water lines in, no new water lines, and I was just curious, you know...
There are no residents in the subdivision, and this is the end of the street.
So what this really affects is the traffic for the people before that, before the gate. So there's going to be more traffic on that road.
None of the lots are sold.
Yeah.
None of the lots have sold.
Yeah.
There is one lot that Wayne County did, but that's a different story altogether. It's not really a part of the subdivision.
So that's the end of...
Now...
Portion, right?
Right.
And now, our next quarter of business is Resolution Series 2022, number six, regarding intergovernmental agreement for permitting. And that is going to be in the public hearing.
Right, I don't think that, I didn't prepare a staff report for this because you guys approved this at the last meeting, right?
So we have two to deal with in the public hearing.
Not, this one won't. This is a resolution.
Okay. So we're now looking at Resolution Series 2022, number six. A resolution authorizing city administrator Jimmy Mills to sign the intergovernmental agreement for permitting on behalf of Dune City.
It is E for me.
E for me.
I know, it's very awkward for those of us who haven't...
It should have been a... And we've already approved this?
You approved doing it, and then they sent the agreement. It's kind of like what we just watched this morning, the presentation, same thing, the contract's now here.
Yeah, okay.
And this is the contract? This is a state-operated program.
All right, so do you need a motion to...
Yes, I need, what I need is a motion to approve the resolution to give me authority to sign it.
So...
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? That passes unanimously. Moving on, that ordinance, number 264...
Just a second, I've lost my agenda. I'm not sure.
And the proposed ordinance required two readings before it is enacted. City Charter, Section 34, Proposition 3, provides that both readings may be read by title only if no council member present at the meeting requests it to be read in full or, the copy of the ordinance is provided by a free member, and all requirements for posting and advertising have been met. Can all be started to read?
Yes, they have.
Does any councillor desire the ordinance to be read in full? If not, I would obtain a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
All in favor? I will read ordinance 264 by title only. An ordinance vacating a portion of an unnamed roadway established as private right-of-way by a Silk Coast Lake subdivision in January 28, 1908. But was claimed by Wayne County for failure of anyone to pay taxes and assessments that be against the property, and later conveyed by Wayne County to Dune City by a quick claim deed recorded October 18, 2016. Do we have a staff report?
We do.
And that's...
This, to preface everything, this is the roadway that runs by former mayor Forsy's prop, well, roads between his properties. It is an unimproved roadway of the Silk Coast Lake called Plat, but what triggered actually moving forward is that one of the property owners that is on one side purchased a lot that abuts to this road and would like to have access to his property. He wanted access off of Clear Lake Road, but because the road is there, he cannot get it because it interferes with his access, because we, the county requires certain space between roadways and driveways because it's state law. And so he came to us and asked if we would be willing to vacate that portion, and knowing that the Forsys were interested and they worked with the Alsons and the Aldermans on the corner, I knew everybody was aware this had been going on. I contacted all of them, they all signed agreements to allow this, that they're okay with this. And, let's see, is there anything in particular I need to say? I do recommend that when the city makes its motion, that it reserve a 10-foot-wide utility easement that's measured from the center line of the current right-of-way, out five feet on both sides for utility purposes should we need it in the future. Other than that, the recommendation of staff is that you go ahead and approve it. I did not anticipate any major financial impacts, other than we won't have to improve or maintain the roadway, and currently, there are some huge trees in there, and some trees that, you know, are dying, and so if a tree fell and damaged somebody's house or killed somebody or whatever, we would be held liable if it was on our right-of-way. So I am thinking that the best thing for the city, we have no plans of improving it at this time, the only thing we might need in the future would be a utility easement, and so I say let's go for it and see what happens.
My only comment there would be, you know, how property lines go. The center of lines go, they, it can end up anywhere, and I think that it might be important that this is surveyed.
Yes, survey has already been...
So we know exactly where the property line is, where five feet away is, therefore, there's the center of the road, so it's really clear.
Right, it's being surveyed now.
Okay.
And this is being paid by the property owners?
No, our survey, the city is paying for that survey.
They're going to have to pay for their own line adjustments and things?
Yes. All we will do is record the deed to them. They have to do whatever they want to do after that.
What does that survey cost?
I, they're estimating $8,500, and so I asked them why it's so expensive, and I found out that I had some of the information that they needed, and they were going to have to go look for while I already had it, so...
How many property owners are involved?
One, two, three, four.
And this is, the city is paying to have this done, is that right?
The city is paying to have this survey done so that we can ensure that we are conveying the correct thing.
Right.
Because it's an unimproved... Because it's an unimproved roadway, that means it was never built.
Yeah. Now, if I understood you correctly, you are recommending that we keep this right-of-way even though there's... No, you are not recommending...
I'm recommending that you vacate it, but reserve a utility easement.
Okay, that's... But did I not understand you then to say if we have... So that utility easement, a tree that's growing right there and falls on a house or somebody, you were saying that there's a liability for the city, but that...
There is if we own it, but an easement is not...
Just an easement, we're okay with that?
Water, electricity, right?
Yeah, okay, okay.
Any other conclusions, staff? First, Pioneer Road is that the other straight road off to the right? Just there, I see, because if you look, there's all kinds of... In the plaque over there, they have these road easements that are, some are developed and some aren't, I take it.
Did I highlight on anybody's...
I see the yellow, which is, I think, the one in contention. I think that's it. But I couldn't tell which one was Pioneer, just...
Pioneer.
Which isn't our road, it's a private road.
No.
It isn't, yeah.
No, the attorneys came back and said, see, all unimproved roadways... Oh, no, yes, Pioneer, you're right, is a private road. You're right, the unimproved roadways are ours. Wherever I highlighted it, it's right, yeah, there we go. Where it is, is right there, this is Pioneer right here.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah.
This is Pioneer. The one on the west side of lots eight, seven, and 800.
Okay, moving along. Item D under Old Business is review language of ordinance number 256-A. Have amended and adopted.
The resolution, so has it been passed unanimously or no? Have we had a motion on that?
We have a public hearing, right?
Not on our resolution.
Oh, yeah.
Is it a resolution? Yeah.
I can't find the two, six.
No. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm back on my resolution. Ordinance, yeah, you're right, ordinance, we have a public hearing, sorry, I'm sorry. I got myself confused.
So what are we on?
Well, it says review language of ordinance number 256-A is amended and adopted.
Okay, so you're looking at...
Yeah, but it has blue lines at the bottom.
Yes, blue lines at the bottom.
Yeah, like here. It's related to the package.
You will recall.
This is on page one.
It looks kind of like this.
Yes, I know. So we need to review the language and...
Right, so I need to tell you where the changes were made. So as you will recall, one of the changes was a concern over the insurance provision, which is on page eight. An E to B to numbers at the bottom. And the language has been changed to read, maintain general liability insurance. The word "commercial" has been taken out. And then the other one was language regarding... Trying to remember what it was, registration?
I remember the commercial thing. But we didn't talk, yeah, but we did talk about, remember the change, but we did talk, you were going to come up with some...
I got it, I got it. Right, and now she has... But I wanted to show, what section is that in? Do you remember what section that's in?
Which one?
The one about the definition, oh, I highlighted it, never mind. On page four.
Yeah, right. Short-term rentals.
The definition of short-term rentals, the last sentence. Short-term rentals does not mean a property that serves as a primary residence for the owners for six months or six or more months a year that is rented out to others during the remaining months.
Those are the only two changes, right?
In this document, yes.
And so we need to approve these changes?
No, I have things that I would like to add.
Okay.
Some suggestions. Okay. Jamie added the short-term rentals does not mean property that... That goes to the primary resident, primary residence of six months and more. And that's actually what I had, but I had something else to add it in here. And mine reads, this does not apply to homes that may be renting out a single room or dwellings where the dwelling is the primary address of the property owner and they live in the dwelling six months out of the year. So the final addition to that was for homes that were just renting out a room in the home. So then I had, under permit fees, number six. I thought that was kind of open-ended and I was wondering why they didn't have something that...
Page six.
Sorry, I just got taken over.
Six, so it was D, I think it's, so it's D, is that right?
No.
Item six, page six, item six, and what other D? Is that what you're at?
No, I'm at six, additional information. Such other information the city administrator deems necessary. I couldn't think of any other information that might be necessary, so I was wondering if that was necessary.
I want to see what this applies to.
Permit fees.
It's on page six.
Yeah, I know, I'm just trying to see, I have to find out what it applies to. The information on the form. Well, we may find out at some point in time that there's other information that we need. But, I mean, I don't have a problem taking out, it just means it'll keep coming back and keep coming back until we have, we learn what information we need.
The other thing that I have on here was act, under actions required by a property owner. And that is on page...
So on page seven.
Page seven. Okay, so, under action required by property owner, my only thing was, after thinking about it a while, Jamie and I had discussed number two before, and I didn't think the website was necessary, but after thinking about it for a while, I don't think any of that's necessary to have in a home for the people that are there, fire and rescue, or the county sheriff, or anything.
Seems like if there were an emergency, that would be a handy thing to have. Well, what she's...
It's supposed to 911, I know.
What she's saying, no one's going to be looking at the fine, but...
Right.
I just don't think...
She just doesn't want advertising for our businesses. That's what she's saying.
Oh, is that what you're saying?
That's what you're saying.
And, okay, under the insurance one...
Move on page one.
Page eight, sorry. For the insurance, I'm not sure it's right that we tell owners how much insurance they should have. So what I have, what mine reads, is each owner of a short-term rental must maintain rental and general liability insurance for personal injury or property damage. Knowing that they are responsible for paying all costs, even if costs exceed their insurance limit, owners should look at having as much coverage as possible to protect their assets as well as ensuring the protection of neighboring dwellings and property during the time of rental. Remember that actions of the rental tenant reflect on you as well as the dwelling owner.
Okay, that goes beyond...
Reflect on your asset, dwelling owner, sorry.
What's that?
That goes beyond clear and objective, and all code have to be clear and objective. That goes into subjective and making suggestions. I agree with the first part, but I don't know that we need to go into the telling them how to live their lives kind of thing if that really helps them. The other thing is that this doesn't protect the city. And we will get sued if somebody is injured in a house in our city limits.
I explained that when we spoke of this a while back, a few weeks ago, and I was in the business. The homeowner would simply, on their own policy, it does not have to be a commercial policy.
I understand that, yes.
Oh, but I'm not sure she does, because she's saying that, et cetera, et cetera. The homeowner would name Dune City as an additional insured on the liability section. Okay, so it puts Dune City in the same position as the homeowner, every bit as much. And so if there was a lawsuit against the owner or against the city, then the city is covered by the liability coverage of the homeowner. And it costs nothing, or at least it used to cost nothing, to get that added to a homeowner's policy. Well, not necessarily have commercial.
But the part that I thought is substantial that she brought up was to do with the limits of liability. And she thought that you have lower limits. And I think that we probably ought to ensure that our neighbors get at least a minimum amount of $100,000 or $500,000 instead of maybe $30,000 or $50,000 or something like that. It's kind of like that. I think the reason why we have a number there, the reason why I thought we should have a number is that we have a minimum limit that if a neighbor or somebody should get injured, they would, the insurance, they would be able to collect that because they have some sort of guarantee from insurance company that they'll have instead of have to try to go and foreclose somebody's property.
I understand that, I'm just thinking that is a little high.
Yeah, well, and seeing that, I'm thinking that since we're doing a commercial thing, I don't know, and I don't think the price is a big difference, but I just think it's the... What we're really considering here is the limits of liability. And you think there should, you think there should be lower?
Our insurance, ours went up four times, four times the normal cost. So I just think that could get very expensive. And I brought that up before, that I wasn't sure about the insurance. So I wanted to throw out that I thought a million dollars was a little bit high.
Yeah. And it can be achieved with an umbrella, a liability umbrella. A lot cheaper than adding a million dollars to, you know, your vehicles and your house and everything else. I know that, but I don't think so.
Well, probably better property owners don't know that, and I'm...
Make them aware of that.
That insurances will use this to take advantage of people and...
Yeah, I agree, there's ways around this, so it doesn't have to be like so burdensome, I think.
We could, I agree with Tom about the umbrella, because that's what we did. I'm just wondering if we could make this read either in the general policy or by way of the umbrella. I don't have quite the same feeling about the limits as you do, but I think limits are okay. I also am wondering if we, because I don't see it there, if we can have the city named as a co-insurer.
That's exactly what I was thinking, you know, this provision is to protect the city. It's not to protect anybody else, it's to protect the city. And so maybe there's a way of rewriting it that says that they will maintain insurance sufficient to protect the city in the case of, and hold the city harmless should any claim be filed against the city for actions taken place on the property.
And it's cheap, it's usually free for the homeowner to add the city as an additional insured. And then the agent simply faxes a new deck page to the city that shows that the city is in fact a named insured along with the homeowner. And it's done, provided that, you know, everybody agrees on the limits of liability, I'm not talking about that. I'm just talking about protecting the city.
I'm up for protecting the city.
And reducing the cost to the homeowner, because again, free is paid price.
Are we, because with the recommendations that you made, since we've been hearing them but have actually made any determinations, I'm wondering what the process, the proper process, should we go back and look at these one at a time and make decisions about each one?
I think they should, I think they should be an amendment for each one.
Yeah.
Because, yes, four items, because there's some that I agree and there's some I don't.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's what the agenda says to, to review and as amended and adopted, so. We agree to look at the... We're going over, going to write, and that. Those are it?
Yeah, this was passed.
Right.
The ordinance was passed with the amendment that we take commercial out. And that I work with Susan on this particular language. And so that's what we're working on, that particular...
She gave us four additional things, or four things, unless, can we make an amendment of vote on each amendment? First one, second one, third one, fourth one, and go that way, then do the whole thing actually?
Is this, are these amendments, or are we, these are making changes?
These are amendments, this ordinance was passed.
Exactly, so are these still called amendments?
Yeah, they would need to be in the form of a new ordinance.
That's what I'm asking, yeah, okay.
Here's what I think.
I'm just trying to figure out.
The marriage, the four years, kind of making a carve-out for people that own their homes and renting out a room in their home, not an Airbnb business. The owner of the property, and we're going to do it, we're changing the ordinance that we voted on to accommodate people that own the home that are renting out a room.
That are renting out a room, or they live in their home more than six months and they only rent it out for a couple months?
Okay, well, I've done my homework too, and I've thought of this. I've been in this since the very beginning when the complaints started coming in. And they weren't anything but the single family, they were the Airbnbs. And we're all aware of all the backstory on all of that. But I've been in business for 33 years, and I've had to buy my insurance, I've had to buy my business license, you know, everything that goes with being in business. To me, was, this, nobody here wanted this, this came to us. But what's happened is, this isn't just an here and there thing. We know in Dune City right now, approximately around 40 of these things are going on in Dune City right now. And I feel there's many more than that, that's just what we know right now. You have something, and you have a service, and you're selling this service for a financial gain. And you have customers, and you're making financial gain on it. This is a business. We're doing our budget right now, and we don't have a tax base here in Dune City. You know, we have new ordinance now. And it says that everybody out there that's running, renting, looking down, needs to have a business license, or have a permit. And I don't see where we're doing any good to the city by having a carve-outs because somebody's letting the room out, they're still doing a business, they're still making a profit doing a business. They're in business, making money. And that's what our ordinance covered. So I'm not for making any changes to that myself, so that's what I'm having.
The only thing that I saw after that that we didn't come up is that it's a one-time permit fee. You know, I don't think, I don't subscribe to the annual or something like that. The permit is every time you sell a house, and I was wondering if it should be a limit of like five years or something. of like five years or something.
Well, if I was going to change, if I was going to add something to it, which isn't in there, I think that everybody that has, is renting out a room, running what I consider a business, to have a business license to do this, that's not in there now, but, you know, you're going to do a business.
Yeah, good.
It is, I guess the question is maybe that, and I'm, at this point, I'm kind of on the fence about what you're saying, Duke, but is, I mean, is there sort of a threshold below which we say, well, that's such a tiny operation, and it's not worth going?
It may be a tiny operation, but the liability's still there, and they're still running, they're selling a service. And it's not a little thing, it's an industry in Dune City. It's a, it's a big deal. I know at least one couple, I think two, but I know for sure one couple, they don't live, they live in Florence area, own two homes in Dune City, that Airbnb them out.
But that, but we're, yes, I totally get that, and I'm in agreement with that. What I'm wondering is if you want to target the people that are renting out a room. I don't, I don't know.
I don't think targeting is the right thing. We never, we're not making somebody rent out a room, they made a decision to do that, and it is a business, you can color it any way you want. They're having a service, they're selling a service, and they're making a profit doing it.
Yes.
Well, I think the room thing, it does cover it, but if it's more than six months residence, you know, that if they rent a room or not, if it's a resident that lives in six months, I'm not sure. I think we need to vote on other things. I agree, I, it seems as though if you're renting a room or renting a whole house, if you're injured, you're injured.
You got a liability.
And your liability.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. My suggestion on this one would be, I think we could more easily look at the other three than this one, because I think there's some wording that could be worked on with regard to IFC here, which, and because it's in place, I mean, to me, we could do one of a couple of things. We could either look at the other three and then re-vote on the whole thing, and then say, we're going to look at this one again and take a look at some new wording for next month. Or we could say, since it's already in place, let's take them all at once after we've re-worded this one. That would be my sense, but if you guys feel that it's time to do all four now, I'll...
And we put it, we put it in place with the understanding that we would, in fact, whatever the power began.
Yes.
As Susan, we would.
Yes.
And so I think that's what we're doing, but we do it all once in a row.
No, I agree with that, and I have no trouble with that, and I like some of Susan's proposals. I'm just wondering, this one seems to be a bit of a sticking point. Could we, could we get that one worded just right before we, before we make a decision on that?
So can we table this and have Jamie make the, put the things, oh, because we might put something out. I want to take, I want to get...
I'm sorry, what was that?
I was thinking of table, adding all the changes and voting on it, but I don't know if I agree with all the changes, so I don't know if it...
I think we didn't do one with Tom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I was regressing.
And to me, we could do the other three pretty easily, I'm just not sure we're quite ready on that one.
Which one?
I'm C, I'm C, insurance. That's the one we've had the most discussion on.
Are we ready to do one at a time?
Yeah, I am, myself.
Well, you're first. Take you to page four.
Page four. Definitely pass the permit.
I move that we keep the proposed change that the administrator put in. I don't have a problem with rooms and things, I think the six-month ownership is enough. So do you need to keep that?
Keep that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ready for the question? Have a discussion?
Yeah. Pardon me, but just back to the idea of renting a room out. Rory, can you just, because I'm just, I'm just struggling, I want to make sure I got this right.
So what we're doing, what she did is, we're gonna, we're defining what a short-term rental is.
Right.
And so, short-term rentals does not mean property that serves a primary residence for owners for six or more months a year. It doesn't matter, because if I'm not, if I'm not going to live here for six months if I rent a room out, there's still going to be paying that. If I live here six months and I rent a room, it's not, that's, that's what we're calling short-term rentals, that's what this is.
So to Duke's point here, if we leave it the way it is, somebody could rent out a room for 12 months, of which time period, the owners are living there for six months, but they're still renting out a room to somebody else.
Right.
And you're, I believe you're saying that that's okay, and I believe Duke's saying that's not okay. And so I just want to get clear on where your positions are.
So, so if it's, yeah, so the question is the timing. So if we're saying that it's a permanent residence, if you live there more than six months, and Duke is saying any time, then that's, you know, so we can either vote that down or vote in there. I understand this, and I think, I think that somebody who's going to live as a residence, you know, say, I rent a room out to help me live there, you know, we have roommates and things like that all the time, so I didn't want to get in the rental of rooms, and I want to keep the idea, it's a commercial thing that people are doing because they're not living there. I mean, this is, I think it's a good thing to define, define what a short-term rental is. I mean, if it's only three months residency or something like that, six months seems fine to me, I don't care. It's just that I think we need to have a definition of it. And that was Susan's point, I think.
And Duke, if I understand you correctly, you're saying if a room is rented out, doesn't matter whether they're living there or not, you still feel that's a...
It's still a business, it's still...
Still a business.
Yeah, it may.
And the city could still be held by, I don't know.
Well, that's the insurance part. Liability is the insurance.
Pardon me?
I didn't see.
Yeah.
I guess, I think it's a...
Okay, all right. You know, I get, I get what you're saying, I'm just trying to sort of get clear on the different positions.
I'm trying to let her wrestle with it, actually, so it's good.
Yeah, all right. Okay, so there is a, there is a motion, I'm a second.
And the motion is, is your language, Susan read?
The Susan read, the language, yes. My motion was that S was read by the, that Jamie put in.
Eric, we have a roll call vote.
Sure.
So the motion is to approve as amended, and we have a roll call vote, Jamie?
Good. For the record, I'd like to repeat, the motion is to adopt the change highlighted in the proposed, the proposed change in the ordinance that I had prepared. And let's see, we will start with Counselor Hammond.
I made the motion, I better say yes.
Not always, Counselor.
I couldn't...
Counselor Snow?
Aye.
Counselor Wells?
No.
Counselor Orr?
Aye.
Counselor Mallon?
No.
And that is one, two, three ayes, two noes.
Two noes.
And the motion passes.
Motion passes. And the second motion?
That is on page six, and it is basically to strike paragraph six of sub-paragraph A. That requires what other information that I deem necessary to administer for the permits? And that's fine, I really don't care, I just know that something's going to come up. It always does, I cannot predict what it is.
I move that we retain the, I move that we retain the wording as is additional information to such other information the city administrator deems.
Second.
Ready to vote for a question? And you get a roll call vote?
Okay. Calling for the question, Duke, you move to keep it in there?
I, yes, I move to keep what I've made the change.
Okay.
When I say yes.
And that was Rory and Duke, all right.
You keep agreeing with yourself, Rory, that's good.
Yeah.
I talk to myself too.
And Counselor Hammond, votes aye, right? Okay, Counselor Snow, name, I have to write your names down on everything. Counselor Wells?
Yes.
Counselor Orr?
Aye.
I have to look at this as, a homeowner looking at that is thinking that they're giving a blank check to the city, and I think it would be much more reasonable for, to address these issues as they come up, as Jamie proposed as an alternative, so therefore I have to vote no.
Okay. And that is three ayes and two noes, and the motion to keep it passes.
Okay. And the third issue?
Page seven. The telephone number and website address, she, if I understood correctly, she was saying why Dune City and just leave Siteus Law Valley Fire and Lake County Sheriff's Office, so. I'm like, properly saying this, is that what you were saying? Is take off Dune City's website?
To remove?
No, I was going to remove the whole thing.
So for the sake of discussion, I'm not sure if I'm going to agree with this until I hear everybody, but I'm going to move that we remove item two of that section that says telephone numbers and website addresses of Dune City needs to be included in the, as an action by the property. I'm going to move to remove it.
No second.
I didn't understand that.
I, you're...
He's agreeing with you.
I, I'm moving...
What, round in a circle? I'm confused.
Well, I'm moving that we remove item two, which is what you requested. We need a second, so for discussion.
My explanation, she also indicated that, to my question, wouldn't it be nice to have an emergency number, maybe?
Oh, I saw, I saw you removed this and said, you know, the emergency number is called 911. So she seconds the motion, we discuss it, and I, and that's, that's what, we're trying to vote on this here, so, yeah, so.
And you're reserving the right to disagree with yourself?
I am.
Perfect.
Yeah. Okay. So you're going to second the motion that you want to remove that, or you don't want to, if you don't want to second it, I, for a second, I'll stay there.
Well, I'll second it, I just think there's, there's a bunch of information that I know that people aren't going to look at and, or go look it up in the book, because you have a book. Are they going to go look it up in the book, and they're going to call 911?
There is no book in most cases.
Yeah, so...
There is, in the fire.
Well, or they'll have to...
We're not requiring them that they keep a book.
No, but I know most people just have a book.
It's not in a rental home that they don't live in.
In the rental homes. I know several of the owners that do that.
Ready for the question? Or anybody want to discuss it? So, any discussion?
I would just like to say that I, I don't see any reason that this has, that's going to be a triple negative. It seems to me like there's nothing but positive for having it posted. That's my feeling.
Call for a question? And I believe the motion was to keep it in?
No.
No, to remove it.
Remove it.
All right, let's do a...
Roll call again?
Roll call again.
Write everybody's name in here. Here, I'll just do it right here.
I'm going to abstain. Do I abstain?
You abstain.
Because I don't care, I'm going to abstain.
Abstain. Okay, Counselor, whoops, put you on the wrong line. Counselor Snow?
Aye.
Counselor Wells?
No.
Counselor Orr?
No.
Counselor Mallon?
No.
And we're going to abstain, abstention. So, we have three noes. So the motion to remove the item...
It fails, so we keep it.
Okay, so we keep it, yeah.
And the fourth one, or...
Insurance?
Yes, the fourth one is the insurance. In my notes, unless there was something else, is that it? Is that it? And you wanted to table this to another discussion?
That would be my thought on it. I think we need a little bit more wording, word smithing perhaps. So, does that require a motion? Or if we don't have anything?
No, that just requires a directive to staff.
We don't have to make a motion?
Yeah.
A directive to staff to do something, but you'll have to tell me what you want me to do.
Okay.
And I will put it off for a while, because I think Susan and I should work on this together.
Okay.
And I know that she is not going to be available for a time. So it'll be a while, but...
That's why.
As long as this, we, what I did do is make sure that this does not become effective until July 1st.
Oh, right.
So we have some time to work on.
Okay, good. So at this point, you don't need a motion to approve this as changed, because it hasn't even gone into effect yet, or do you?
Right, because it hasn't gone into effect yet.
Well, I think we should, I think we should, so we don't start over again.
Right. So you, you're suggesting we approve it in its new form, but without changing item C?
Right.
And then we would just...
And then bring the...
And then we would heal it.
With the understanding that we will...
Yes.
And then we're going to do C, because it looks like as worded anyway, all C addresses its limits of liability and personal injury. It does not really address the liability to the city per se, and I think that's blatantly important.
I think Tom is right, and I would suggest, and I could make this as a proposal, that we do add to this language, even if it's only going to be until it's fixed in a better form, that we add something to it that says must maintain general liability insurance. And, and must name the city of Dune City as a...
Additional insured.
Additional insured.
Second.
Did I just make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then he said, was that a motion?
I guess it was.
Yeah.
Any discussion? I'll call for the question. And let's do it again by roll call.
Okay, no.
So just to clarify my own motion here, this is to add to this language the statement that the city of Dune City will be named as additional insured.
Counselor Hammond?
Yeah, aye.
Counselor Chanel?
Aye.
Counselor Wells?
Yes.
Counselor Orr?
Aye.
Counselor Mallon?
Yes.
Wow.
Whoa, we all agreed?
We need to make more motions.
Maybe that's it. And I agree with myself, too.
I just want to, I appreciate the council looking at these things, because it's very important to the constituents that I talk to, so thank you for the feedback.
All right. Now moving into public hearings, and it looks like it's 7:30 PM.
It does.
I can't see that far.
And the first public hearing will be on ordinance number 263, which is the ordinance that's taking importation of the driving rights established in the public right of way, a little walking, eight subdivision dated September 30th, 2020.
We have to call it to order.
I'm calling it to order.
That time for the record, please?
Already, yeah, the 30th, 7:00. And then, is there anyone who would, public hearing script, just sit here. Have you received any written testimony, or have you read it on the record?
No, I have not.
Okay, each witness will be allowed three minutes to speak. After Mr. Counselor, you may ask questions of the witness. Witnesses are to address the council as a whole and not individual.
Witnesses are to address the council as a whole and not individually. Anyone want to speak on this issue?
I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but like I said, the agent representative for the developers here, should you have, since the council have any questions. I think it's pretty simple. But you may have questions.
Do we have any questions of the representative here?
I don't think so, I think we move, everybody turns to the right there.
Alright, and I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:32. Councillors, do you have any, um, yeah, do you have any further questions of staff? I would entertain motions to change or amend the liability ordinance 263 presented depending.
Anybody want to change it?
If, if not, then you just, you just need a motion to approve ordinance 263, yes?
I need to have a motion to entertain a second reading by title only.
Second reading.
Ah, okay, so move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm...
Alright, I'm going to do a second reading of ordinance, um, 263 by title only. Ordinance vacating portion of Little Women crime established as a public right of way by Little Women Heights subdivision dated September 30th, 2020. I will now entertain a motion to accept the wording for ordinance 263 as presented and to adopt and pass ordinance 263. And a roll call must be taken.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion?
I, I have, I have a, I don't like the idea of having gated communities and having them separated from the city. I don't have a problem in giving the, I have, you know, I just, I just have, it, you know, the exclusive, people can't go and come and things of that sort, so I just have an inherent problem with that. Just, it's not a city, it's, you know, there's us and there's them. And I, and I know Florence has a history of gated committee, uh, communities, and part of that was because of, uh, in, in the old days, category, we've been going into and things, and there's a measure of safety that way. And I just, I understand it, I just have, I just don't particularly like my discussion, and I just needed to say that.
That's a good point. We do have one or more, am I right? I don't know where other than me.
We do, and it's an exclusive thing, but I, I think it's us and them.
No, it's a good point, right. I'm, yeah.
Alright, we had a motion and a second?
Uh, okay. Do we get a second?
Yeah, is there any more discussion?
Roll call will, will must be taken.
Yes. Councillor Hammond?
Oppose.
Councillor Snow? Councillor Wells?
Yes.
Councillor Orr?
Aye.
Councillor Mallon?
Ordinance 263 is hereby adopted and will become effective on recording of this ordinance of Lane County.
And the plat will, the replat will come back to a later day.
Okay. I don't remember big plat anymore. The next public hearing is on ordinance 264. I will hold the presented item in public hearing at 7:35. City attorney, have you received any written testimony to be read on the record?
I have not.
Each witness will be allowed three minutes to speak, after which the councillor may ask questions of the witness. Witnesses are to address the council as a whole and not individually. I'm assuming you guys aren't going to speak?
Well, they're not on that one.
Does anyone want to speak on this issue?
No, we don't have anyone to speak on this issue, I'm surprised.
Let me ask you.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And we're now closing the public hearing at 7:36. Counselor, do you have any further questions of staff? I would entertain motions to change or amend the item under the ordinance 264 as presented depending.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Discussion?
We were at a break, just to approve it, or we, I was thinking about something else. Well, you don't have to apologize for thinking. Yeah, I have to. I will now entertain a motion to have a second reading of ordinance 264 by title only. So...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I will do the second reading of ordinance 264 by title only, an ordinance vacating portion and unnamed route established as a private right of way by the Salford Heights subdivisions dated January 28th, 1908. But was pre-vented by Lane County for failure of anyone to pay taxes and assessments living against the property and later conveyed by nature to Dune City, but quickly indeed recorded October 18th, 2016. I will now entertain a motion to accept the wording for ordinance 264 as presented and to adopt and pass ordinance 264. So...
Second.
All those in favor?
Discussion? Ah, there we go, now it's your turn.
The discussion, we, this, we are definitely going to keep that easement for utilities, that's all I want to make sure, that it looks good, so.
And that is in the language, correct?
That is in our language.
Yeah, okay.
I have a motion and a second, and again, a roll call, vote must be taken.
Oops, don't want to rub it on that. Councillor Hammond?
Aye.
Councillor Snow?
Aye.
Councillor Wells?
Yes.
Councillor Orr?
Aye.
Councillor Mallon?
Yes.
Order number two, ordinance 264 is hereby adopted and will become effective on recording of the ordinance of Lane County. We do all for that. And that would be public hearings. New business. Consideration of acceptance of property donation of land and money Rebecca's Trail property.
There is a piece of land I thought I'd do a map.
Where is?
Okay, good. I don't have it. The piece of man, land highlighted on the map that was provided to you is, uh, there's very little, little of it that isn't wetland. There's basically a septic site, that's it. So it is no longer buildable the way the people thought that it might be, and so rather than mess with it in any way, shape or form, they decided they would like to donate it to Dune City for the tax write-off. So, um, and we have to actually accept it. So we are writing a letter to them, this is, what it's about is whether to send this letter or not, that's in your package. And basically we say, yes, as long as it comes back with a clear title and that there are no obligations or responsibilities remaining. They were, unfortunately, when they acquired the property, they acquired a violation of Department of Environmental Quality rules and regulations with regard to wetlands, and ended up with a very, I won't say how much, but a very, very large fine, and a ruling that said that they had to re-vegetate the area, even though it was the prior owner who had done it. And so, um, they did, they have to redone the vegetation and examination of the re-vegetation has been done. I will be talking to the guy that went out in the field to do it, it took forever because of COVID, because state employees weren't allowed to go out of the office, they had to stay in the office, so. They have done that, he has done his inspection and he will be here on Thursday, tomorrow. And I think they've got all that squared away, and so that should be taken care of, and I will double check to make sure that we would not be getting any, into any trouble.
So if it was a, it was a taxable thing, we were a taxing district, we'd be losing money, but we're not. It's Lane County. Do you need a motion to, or?
A motion, just, yeah, a regular motion.
I move...
Second. Or was that a full motion?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that.
Any...
I thought I jumped out.
No, yeah, second. Any discussion? Uh, quick discussion, um, where does Carhanker community watches you get your barter from, and still this? No, this is...
Well, this is with regard to the Rebecca's Trail property donation.
Okay, sorry.
We'll get that one in there.
Yeah. Sorry, no.
Good.
Starbush, you were concerned, this one's done.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any vote passes in the chamber? Resolution series 2022, number seven, regarding accepting operation and control of the Fertile Water Association Incorporated Community Water System?
I need to re-move myself.
Hold on a second. You don't have to get down, you don't have to be quiet.
I'll have to sit cover up. What if I want to sit?
No, actually, you can talk.
Yeah, can you lie, put it down there?
I think you're...
You just can't.
Yeah.
Want a car? Down there? I am part of it, so I'm not going to be taking part in the vote, but I, I would like to say something about it. First thing I'd like to put in the record, without the hard work of Terry and Jennifer Austin, we wouldn't have been without water decades ago, they've put in hundreds of hours keeping us in water, and it's, it's, it's got to the point to where we're out this last few months, we've been out several times for days at a time, right now, we're on two hours a day, six to eight o'clock, running water. The system, I've been out there 37 years, I've worked on it in several different places, the place, it was completely put in, unengineered. The main problem with the thing, what I've worked on it, is it was only buried down about one foot deep and right in the red zone and every tree that grew, keep breaking and moving, the, the low lines are breaking, fracturing, and now it's just, it's got out of control, we have leaks now that we can't even find. We burn out pumps because they're pressurized all the time and they're running all the time, we're burning them out. It's just, it never was designed the last 60 years, this last, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's been shot, and like I said at first, only because of the hard work of Terry and Jennifer that we even had, Markers Long and Matt, and, and being a member of the Fertile that I am totally for, the city taking that over, it's going to have expense to all the folks out there that are on that system, but we, we have to, we have to do it.
How many are on this?
Twelve.
Twelve, yeah, twelve thirteen, so many are on.
Yes. They are currently using water under the Dune City Shared Domestic Water Program.
And that's what we continue with, right?
Correct.
So is there a cost to the city?
Yes.
Yes.
And is that, I don't know where to find that, or can you tell me?
Um, I have asked the engineer to provide me with an estimated cost. We're, we're talking about changing, currently, and I should have given you the map, and I'm sorry, I didn't, but currently changing how the water goes to, up to the storage tank. Changing the storage tank and the treatment so that it meets drinking water standards, and then putting in the pressure valve to distribute it out back to the, to the water users.
You're just saying that the city is, currently has funding from federal government to assist with making an affair necessary?
Yes.
Is the affair necessary meaning to go under all water rights, I think?
So... Well, what we're talking about here is the city for once actually having a municipal water system, and it only serves those 12 individuals. It's the way cities started water systems, municipal water systems, all up and down the Oregon coast. It was to take over, community water system take over operation and...
Then are the 12 people...
And grow from there.
Are the 12 people going to have pumps in the lake then individually, or?
No.
Okay, they're going to have a tank above ground?
They're going to have a tank and it has to be treated to drinking water standards.
We'll also have a water rail from now on to, to the city.
Yes, and there would be a water rail associated.
Probably.
But as you probably recall, we've discussed this before in terms of the money that we got from the feds?
Right.
And what we're going to use it for, and we're going to use it to make sure that people in Dune City have drinkable water.
Right.
And it sounds like this is one of those situations that is an absolute necessity.
Absolutely.
And so, I would like a motion to adopt this resolution, series 2022, number seven, which is going to give JB the authority to perform the actions necessary for the city to accept membership and control of the water system and to provide the water forces, water services to the self-schmued community system. For the sake, for the sake of discussion, I move, I move that we do this. So I want to discuss it, technically we can't discuss unless we have a second.
I'll, I'll second that I too want to discuss it.
Right.
Alright.
And I want to vibrate on for a vote. Yeah, well, I was trying to say to that.
But you still can.
Yes. Alright, we're open for discussion. So, so the first thing is that we can have, we do have a water problem, a lot, a lot of people don't agree with what we do here, and there's wells going dry and things, and this is probably the first start of maybe creating a water district. I don't know if it should be a city water district, or a private one like we have with Coast Water and things like that. I, it's unfortunate that it's a, it's a group that we have a council member, a member of, and I would have been far more likely to say, be in favor of it if it was somebody that didn't have a vested interest, but he does. And that, that's a concern, but I have a vested interest in that, I want to see a water district, I'm not necessarily in favor of sewer district, and, and I've talked to a non-engineer about, Mr. Rich Olson Garland, he, he was a, he was a water district guy, he knew about that things, and I've talked to him about costs of doing that. We do have funds from the government for the COVID things that pay for this, which we did pay, we did argue to do, which is a good thing, and they're going to get built. So we, it, it's kind of a, a good start to see what sort of infrastructure we're going to need for a real water system. I think it would also be a, a good mark in our favor for our state water rights, which they want us to create a water system.
That's a good point.
That's maybe a small start toward that end, and in my estimation, anyone who lives in Dune City, they're right to have water. And this is going to provide that for them.
So does this, and that was going to be part of my question, Jamie, because we've been talking for years about a municipal water system, does, does this in fact take us a baby step forward in the...
It does.
Process? Because that's the way I read your wording.
Yes, it does. And the beauty of it is, the legislature in the last session, being a drinking water system is extraordinarily expensive with the state, I mean hugely expensive. You have to file this, it's $850 just for the application, and, you know, and it goes on from there. In the last legislative session, they carved out small community water systems and reduced their reporting requirements, which also reduced the treatment requirements. And, and they have not reduced any of the fees, and I doubt they ever will.
I'm concerned about liability and the cost, because the truth is, the homeowners and the property owners will be the ones that will be paying for it, as, if people want to get connected to it, then they'll end up paying for that, but I, man, I don't know, how close is this to Manzanita?
A long way away.
Because I, I know it well, out there just recently.
Yeah. The, the Manzanita is far closer to South Coast.
Notice the reason, I'm still trying to understand why they don't want to just go in the lake with the pump.
They have one.
As opposed to doing the above ground and forming a municipal... As opposed to doing the above ground and forming a municipal?
They have a pump in the lake.
For the tank.
And it pumps it up to the tank.
Yeah.
And then the tank pressurizes it so that it can go to the homes.
Alternatively, if the twelve people were to put in their own pumps in the lake, then get rid of the tank, that would be one thing.
I think they're.
Versus, versus the, yes, you know, we now have our little B U D.
That is an option that they could do. That is an option they could do. It would cost them a great deal of money.
Cost us, it's going to still cost them a great deal of money, that's the discussion.
True.
The real discussion is, do we want to, do we want to have a municipal water system? And we have all kinds of water right issues that this will kind of help us along. And so.
That's the other side, yeah.
Right.
So what, what does this change? This changes the, I don't know if ownership is the right word, but responsibility to the city. But are we simply taking over what's already there and in place?
Because the government gave us money to do that, and we take a big headache to do.
And one of the great advantages is it moves us in the direction of something we might need it to be for a long time.
Correct.
Okay.
But Ms. Councilor Mellon is correct. That is an option for each of those twelve to get a pipe that runs from their house down to the lake.
We can say, no, we don't want to do it. And it's your problem and it's going to be your problem. Except I think we have a water, these people have an immediate problem. I think we have a lot of people that have an immediate problem. We can't even, we can't even solve it because they're so far away from a centralized system.
Jamie, do these people have the option then? If we do all this, do they still have the option to put in their own or do they?
As long as they come to Doom City, each of those homes in that subdivision was given a point of diversion under the original permit of our permit. That was the only subdivision. Well, no, that's not true. Alderwood has one, but Furnakers. And those are the two subdivisions that have, is designed to have diversions from each and every home in the subdivision.
So we can't guarantee that all twelve of these homes will go with this if we do this?
Well, I think that's a thing that we ought to insist on it. I think, I think we ought to insist on that if we're going to do this, that you all have agreed. If they don't agree, we're not going to do it.
Can we do that?
Well, they have all agreed.
Okay.
All of them have agreed.
Okay.
All the people who get a part of the system.
Yeah. To make sure that, I'm ninety-nine percent sure on this, but I want to double check. This applies only to these twelve. And anything in the future, like for example, the lane that I live on, where I've heard of at least one or two wells going turning to salt water, not affected by this, so that I don't have to recuse myself from this, that could be a future vote, but it's not this one.
Right, that's, I mean, although it's probably physically able to be expanded that far, we're talking a huge difference.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's something.
Your, what you're talking about is an expansion of South Coast Water District.
Yes, okay.
Well, I'm thinking, I'm thinking extension, these people will be paying and things like that. Are these guys going to be the first? But we got, I guess I'd rather see, since we voted for the COVID funds to pay for it, I'd rather see that paying for it and have a district where we can start.
Well, the COVID funds are going to pay for all the testing and the chlorine, that's a good question.
No, not the future, not the future. And no, chlorine is not necessary.
Well, South Coast.
Well, if it comes, if it comes, well, South Coast is more than twelve people. The smaller system now is like anything below fourteen. All you'd have to do is test for E. coli. In the beginning, you have to do it frequently and nitrates and, what's the other one? E. coli? I said E. coli, nitrates and.
Harpene.
Harpene, yeah.
Looking up, I think that might be talking.
That's deep medicine.
Was that a vote?
I thought that was Duke Bangle's head on the wall. It could be that too, yeah.
I just want to make sure that we're able to handle it.
That's clear.
I know, it's a scary, it's a concerning, a scary consideration.
It's not an understanding, it's a whole other why they would want that if they already have a point of diversion already.
It's not working though. What they're going to have to do is, it sounds like they're going to have to re-do the new piping all the way because they have leaks and.
Yeah, and they put in their own treatment.
No, they wouldn't have to do it.
Okay.
It's a homeowner.
Okay, that's still their responsibility.
If we, if the city says no, that's what they, that's their only alternative.
But you said they have a choice. You said so far they've all agreed that they.
So what I see is that.
They agreed to us taking over. But if you say no, then they'd have to come up with something.
We might be able to add other people to it.
Well, I think what he was asking is, could they back out now? If we start doing this and then they decide not to, I think Thomas came back out, they might have said it now, but.
Well, I'm not sure because they would have to pay fees. They'd have to pay, you know, they'd have to pay for part of it. We still require that they pay for the installation of the, there's a hookup fee and they require for installation of the meter. They have to pay for the meter and installation and all those things under our program. So they would have to do that either, either way.
I think they do, what, the answer, I think that we need to direct them to sign a contract. To do it, that they'll have to do it. I mean, that's, just that one, it's going to be, but there, you see the idea of water fees is that you can spread those costs over time. So we might, you know, it's, that's why they have the fees.
It's higher than wanting people though to test and to whatever in the states involved now, probably more, well, I would guess much more so.
I think you're exactly right. I think we have a water problem and I think we're going to have to have a water district. Or we could have, say, you go to South Coast or somebody like that. But we really need to have a water district here.
This seems like it would be a very small introduction to something that we're probably going to have to have.
Right.
Over the years.
And if it doesn't work, then we sell it to somebody like South Coast.
Now, does this, okay, I'm still not clear on if the system they have now is, has problems. We're taking it over, we're handling those problems.
That's right.
And so we may then have to spend quite a lot of money in order to repipe or whatever is needed to make it work.
Yes.
And those funds are coming from?
Our funds.
Yeah.
And we'll also be, we also have the ability to have grants and funding that we can advertise that to the people. I agree, it's a big responsibility. I see it as also opening.
Oh, I did too, I did too. And I'm not arguing against it. I think we personally have to do this because of all the history that goes behind it. So I just want to make sure.
Once we do, I would suggest we maybe applaud it with other people that want to do the same thing.
Which is a good thing.
And maybe yes, maybe no.
Right, it has to be a terrible problem, yeah. Could be, there's only so much we can do.
Yeah.
What we've already committed to do, we have money.
What we have money to do, yes.
And this could run it out real quick.
Yes, this could run it out real quick.
Well, experience, experience is a good, good teacher.
Is there an estimate as to the cost, Jamie? I didn't.
I didn't want to spend the money on an engineer to figure it out.
Ballpark? Best guess?
I have a ballpark between thirty and fifty thousand.
Five wells.
That's a drive.
You can do the drive, yeah.
Ready for the question?
I believe so.
All those in favor taking a five, I'm saying aye.
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 Any vote? Passes in the air nicely.
Somebody want to go get Duke?
Well, first I'm going to stop.
If he's still alive.
Yeah, the code recovered and getting.
I'll go take him care of.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, that's the other.
I think this might be a fail, but I can maybe try it for the water break issues.
Yeah.
Instead of this, our alpha test or the beta test.
Exactly. Gives us a very small experiment.
We're not able to handle.
We have a task list also.
That's right.
Bob's looking for you in the restroom.
I didn't put any marks in your car either.
Were you banging your head on the wall? The thunder?
That scared you.
All right. Can we tell Duke what happened? You have a tablet?
Yeah, you can tell Duke what happened.
You have your tablet?
He's going to know.
You're the only one that isn't going to get water from this.
I'll do that, that makes sense.
Actually, we're going to find out the break is in his backyard. I bet you anything.
You're playing, oh, I'm pretty sure it is. I've got to make a street.
All right, resolution series twenty twenty-two, number three, changing the name of Water Rights Compliance Fund to be Water Fund and changing said fund to an enterprise fund. So moved.
Second.
Any?
Wait a minute, okay, I've got Rory. Who wants to claim the second?
Susan?
Any discussion? Open the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Do you want to vote in favor or against?
I miss a vote? What are we voting on?
Just agree, the enterprise fund, just agree to it, you're fine.
Chris, you did, you did miss the blended meeting.
Oh, no, I know. Sorry about that.
When you're in that room, if you're voting yes, it's a one flush.
All right, go ahead.
So we just passed resolution twenty twenty-two, number three, changing the name of the Water Rights Compliance.
So you guys work a lot faster when I'm gone, so I'm going to go back to the restroom.
That was the recommendation of our county, so.
All right.
Let's see if he can go back to the restroom.
The county said so?
Yeah.
Not before, creating a new trust and agency fund to track the acquisition and expenditures of the American Rescue Act funds. So moved. Discussion. Any discussions?
Just, this is, how long is this fund going to last?
Until it's done, it's spent.
Yeah, that, because we have some funds that you kept open forever.
Yes, this one is one, well, you know, our auditors taught me a real important lesson. And so I'm learning something about funds that I didn't know.
That's all I wanted to ask.
And it's okay for funds to go away.
Yeah. Ready for the vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Resolution series twenty twenty-two, number five, authorizing the city to apply for a local government grant program from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for improvements to Rebecca's Trail.
I just need the authority. The pre-application is due next Friday. And so I don't even know what we're looking at. How much, I mean, I'm not even, I haven't even looked at it.
I'll still move.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion. Do you want to discuss first?
So is this, is this just for toilets or do we got to do some major developments? Because I might, we might have some issues with that. We're just applying for, you know, what the scope of a grant is going to be?
Not until I see the engineer's plans. But I mean theoretically, it's to put the initial trail in and get that part done.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You cue? We have no executive session. Reports, clearly center report.
Well, my report would be more of a question. How's the storage unit coming along, Jamie?
The lights were installed today, except that they reminded me, oh, I was supposed to buy an outside light so they could put the outside light on it too. And I forgot. And so I've got to go buy an outside light.
A security light idea?
Well, one by the front door. Yeah. And so that'll be done. And then I call the heating company. I would have called them today if I could have found the telephone number. But I'll call them tomorrow.
Well, the light you're going to buy will be one that comes on at night every, every.
Well, it depends on what you want me to do. I can get them, one with a motion sensor. And then every time a deer walks by or the neighbors' bunnies. Are the wind blows really hard on the pump?
I think you're talking light sensor, not motion sensor, right?
Yeah.
Light sensor.
Just light sensor, just on at night?
I think that's a little good idea.
Okay, on at night?
Yeah.
Off at dusk.
On at dusk, I think.
Water Quality Report.
Not too much to report.
I'm still waiting here back from the state of Oregon. But I wanted to read to, there seem to be some confusion. So I wanted to make just a general statement that the water analysis that's done by the Water Quality Committee is for a state of Oregon program. It's not for Doom City and it's not specific to any homeowners. So it doesn't do the E. coli and phosphates and all those kinds of things. It is for the general health of our lakes. And that's what it's for, for Oregon to just know the general health of the lake and how it's working.
Oh, that's still good information.
No, it's still good information.
Favorite report?
District two has one.
Let's have it.
Buckskin Bob, I'm not sure where the end of the road is. But somewhere at the end of there, there's a beginning to show the roof buckles thing. Because when you go out, you know, it goes around there. That's the place that I think we need curbs too, because the guy has tires, has a curb so people don't drive into the upper end there. So that's Buckskin Bob, Jet's Trail. Google Earth suggests that we can have a continuing right of way, but it's been gated off. So people don't, aren't encouraged to go that way. And I think one of the things we need to make sure that there's access, isn't that we're going to access Rebecca Trail, Rebecca's Trail.
Rebecca's Trail is Jet's Trail.
Yeah.
Right. So there's a gate there and there's.
Yes, that will become, that gate will be gone. It may require legal action.
We're going to have some problems with that. That's, that's the only point that I wanted to point there.
That's a fire going.
All right. And then I guess we're done bringing, we have a building permit there for that place that's being built? I didn't see one sit there.
Yeah, kind, I guess we do. I don't know, we could have to check up Claire, I think we do.
Hellcat Trail, the last time I was here, it was very narrow, but somebody cut trees and brushed it and it's been cleared. And it's a lot better, it's still narrow, but it's a lot better. Osprey, there was a pothole in the cul-de-sac that got magically fixed. I don't know if you did that or what the homeowners did.
No, that was magically fixed by South Coast Water Company because they were supposed to fix it in the first place years ago.
Okay. And then Parkway Drive, the work in progress, as everybody knows, has spout. And I thought it was a new pothole, but I think it's not. There's a pothole at the end near Boy Scout Drive just before I made the turn. That's all I have. Okay?
I sent mine in to Jamie. Westlake needs a lot of work on different areas, trimming back bushes. There are a few potholes that need to be fixed. And I don't remember street by street because I sent it in to Jamie, so she has it.
Duke?
Drag around, I'm pretty much complaint driven, somebody.
Do you drag and then deflect the complaint?
I left the ones, when I see a walker or something, I don't know, you had a problem, I mean.
Okay.
I plead this just a minute.
I think the cloud nine, once again, we're racing up and down of cloud nine. I've heard of the plant, I've heard of people doing it. So whatever we need to do, I guess it needs to get done soon. But we have thirty day or sixty days to get anything implemented. I can't remember what we were, when John was here and.
Yeah, the Airbnb bunch running up and down the road.
Right. I don't know what you're talking about though. I mean, I have no jurisdiction over them running, over the speed limit. But the state does and the county does. And supposedly we have deputies here.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting a traffic problem. I'm just suggesting a nuisance problem.
For noise.
With the same problem, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, for noise.
Noise, asthma, and danger.
We don't have traffic. We don't have traffic code. We don't have anything that addresses that. Our nuisance code doesn't address that. And so if we're going to head in that direction, I'm gonna need some guidance.
What were we doing then with the public hearing? Were?
That was, no, that was noise.
That was noise?
Strictly noise.
Okay, so noise.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, the roads under mine, heard you need some trees trimmed. Starting to roll, but the roads are in pretty good shape. No obstacles anymore. Emergency services report?
Going back on roads, I'm looking for volunteers who want to help do trimming. I have no one to do trimming and no one to do brushing and no one to sweep streets. I'm looking, I have contacted Lane County and asked Adam if he could send his crews out because we have an intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement with them. And he said he would do what he could. Unfortunately, you know, he can't really send out his crews until their work is done. And that's been part of the problem.
You know, I, I just had a thought. I've seen it too, the Columbia County Jail used to have jail inmates come out and do work. Do we have county jail people that can do work for us here?
The only thing we have is the kids.
The city roads, just county roads.
Oh, but I mean, we.
I could call, you know, the camp and see if they were available.
Care for it?
Yes.
They cost money, no?
They cost money.
But they do cost a lot.
But the county, county might provide inmates to do that too, I don't know.
Provide?
Inmates to do that, but I know that Lane County Jail is a long ways away from here, so, but I was just a thought.
They do litter pickups on county roads.
Yeah. Yeah, and I've seen around, so.
We enjoy the day out.
City administrator, recorder, finding staff report?
Okay, emergency services report. I did not attend the WeLog meeting, but then there was a second one before this meeting took place. I did attend that. But most of it is with regard to making arrangements for the upcoming events. So that kind of thing was uppermost on everyone's mind. My report.
All right.
A second, I'll give my report.
For the business order?
I don't count.
Yes, sir, real quick. I do think we should move it kind of more toward the front burner on getting our equipment back and boom truck and waste cart. In that vein, I would be willing to patrol for free as a volunteer that can manage in our area. And I would also be willing to train others to do that. That would be a very big deal from a citizen perspective. Because they're seeing the presence.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's what it is. And so it looks really well, very effective.
Yeah. Very good offer.
But again, you know, might take a little public oil change and maybe a battery for the car.
Battery, probably. Oil change probably is fine, but battery definitely.
Didn't that have some, some water damage inside from the windows being left open a lot? Or do I not remember?
No, it did.
A canine.
It was pretty nasty. And it was a canine in it, so the back seat, which was easy because that means you'd just spray it out.
Yeah, you would pitfall.
Okay.
So, okay, before Carter, I'm getting that.
That would be, yeah.
Yeah, I had not.
Do that.
That's great.
Not a lot, but I would pull maybe Monday a week.
Cool.
And then I could train others how to do that. No, it's easy. I, I don't know how we handle a background check though, but maybe somehow we could do that.
Right now, I'll try to just call and ask the chief if he would do it for me. Please, 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 because he's not supposed to.
Any?
Yeah, I just want to compliment the mayor on running a very good meeting tonight.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
I would like to give my report. I can wait till after good of the order.
Oh, yeah. Get a picture for transfer thing.
Okay, there were sixteen permits issued between March tenth and April fourteenth. Four were structural, three mechanical, one plumbing, three electric, and five public works permits consisting of four right-of-way facility placement permits and one shoreline vegetation removal permit. And there are two additional new homes being constructed. We currently have fifteen completed and approved fish screens available for purchase. Anyone wishing, only it's not fifteen anymore, there has been one, two, three, four sold. Just to, they, anyone wishing to purchase the fish screens must contact City Hall. Orders will be filled on a first come, first served basis. A complaint of work being done in the shoreline zone is being resolved with revegetation of the area taking place and the fines, and a fine having already been paid. Other complaints received have involved people allowing others to live on their property in RVs. And we also received a complaint about Clear Lake Road. I would like you to know that Clear Lake Road is a county road and not within Dune City's jurisdiction. Also, the city does not currently have anyone to provide road rushing, sweeping, trimming, or maintenance and is looking for volunteers to do the work as our last volunteer is no longer available. But, and a reminder that budget meetings have begun and will continue to be held every Tuesday at 5:00 PM until the Budget Committee approves a budget to be submitted to the City Council for consideration. Thank you.
Jamie? Duke?
Oh, just a reminder that tomorrow, I visit Councilor Snow tomorrow. We have our meetings with applicants for City Council position and Councilor Work. So we do have a looking forward to meeting.
Good.
Once we go. Yeah.
Five thirty tomorrow, yes.
Yeah. How many, how many you have coming?
Three.
Three.
Three, three.
Three.
Three, yeah.
There you go, three.
Thank you, ahead of time for your work.
Yeah.
Susan?
Thank you very much.
I have a comical disease. I have to report, I can't keep my mouth shut.
You have a what?
Uninfectable disease.